Good evening. This is the forty-seventh meeting of the seventy-second term of Baltimore City Council. It is now called the order please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Reverend Donald Wright of Gethsemane Baptist Church, and after the prayer we would do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Let us pray. Eternal Spirit, we thank you and we bless you for this day. We thank you for this time of meeting, this time of sharing, and this time where we come together to plan what is best for our city. God, I pray right now that you would be with every person that sits behind these desks to make decisions. I pray on God that you would bless this time of sharing. I pray, God, that you would bless them publicly and privately. In your name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening we welcome Jeffrey Zwolenberg, Executive Director of Reading Partners Baltimore. Welcome.
Good evening. Councilman, Council President Jack Young, Councilmen and Women. My name is Jeffrey Zwolenberg. I'm the Executive Director of Reading Partners Baltimore. I've had the lucky opportunity to be here before. Mary Pat Clark, good to see you again. What I wanted to do tonight was to make sure that you understand that Reading Partners is a children's literacy program who provides one-on-one tutoring in neighborhood schools using community volunteers. One of the most important things that you can do for a young child is to match them up with a caring adult who's going to sit by them and work with them to develop the skills they need to be successful readers. We're in fifteen schools and already serving five hundred students this year, but we have two hundred and fifty students waiting for a community volunteer. Something that we also have been focusing on is bringing volunteers from the districts that we serve in into those schools. So of our fifteen schools, we're in the first, second, sixth, seventh, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth district. That's most of you. What we're asking for is your help and support to bring the citizens who live in your district into the schools where we serve. And so next week you can expect my team to reach out to you with some really simple ways that you can help us put volunteers into schools to help children develop the skills they need to not just be successful readers, but successful children and successful students and adults as they grow up. Thank you very, very much for the time. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you do. This is the Council Council Generalize the Convocation Act for motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman, what's your name? Councilman, no, Councilman Pinkett. Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor generalize the invocation, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We're now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the December third City Council meeting is on councilmembers' desks.
Motion to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Scott. Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page three of the agenda. Executive nomination.
EA eighteen dash zero two one zero David Bowers, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Nine.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one one Tisha Guthrie, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Eleven.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one two Damian Hosling, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Twelve.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one three Charles M. Hill, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Four.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one four Alan R. Ingram, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one five Aletha Joins, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Five.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one six Vernadine Kimball, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Eight.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one seven Shannon E. Snow, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Fourteen.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one eight Cynthia Polviere Truitt, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Five.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one nine Ernst Valerie, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Five.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two two zero Tiara N. Watkins, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission District Thirteen.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two 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 Dr. Joel F. Fitzgerald, Commissioner Baltimore Police Department.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three zero nine Sale of Property 732 West Lexington Street. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain property known as 732 West Lexington Street and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date sponsors, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three one zero City Property Renaming the Oliver Pool to the John D. Murdoch Pool. For the purpose of changing the name of the Oliver Pool located at sixteen forty-one North Spring Street to the John D. Murdoch Pool, sponsors Stokes, President Young, Pinkett, Cohen.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Oliver Pool has been closed for ten years, and we're very fortunate that the mayor's office gave the money so we can open that back up next summer. But Mr. Murdoch has been a legend in East Baltimore because he's been coaching our young men for the last probably fifty years. And I always use the story that he, when his players were playing with him, he actually went to the school unexpectedly to check on them to make sure that they were, one, in class, and they were doing their homework. He was doing that before all these new coaches came around, and it was funny. There wasn't an Uber around. There wasn't a scooter around, and he didn't drive a car. He got there the best way he could, a cab, a hack, a ride, and it's only good to name it after this gentleman who saved a lot of young men's lives here in Baltimore. So I look forward to the whole council's support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three one one Nicotine Replacement Therapy Products Sale and Distribution. For the purpose of requiring certain retailers to sell nicotine replacement therapy products, mandating certain retail display and packaging requirements, requiring certain employers and facilities to offer nicotine replacement therapy products at no cost, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, establishing certain penalties, and generally relating to the sale and distribution of nicotine replacement therapy products. Sponsors Burnett, Scott, Bullock, Henry, Pinkett, Cohen, Clark.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Burnett.
President, and colleagues, this bill is about equity. There are so many people in our city who suffer from heart disease, lung cancer, and other illnesses associated with tobacco and nicotine addiction. And when I think about the communities where I live at, most people do not have easy access to get to a pharmacy, do not have access to a doctor or health care, and rely solely on what's in front of them at a corner store or gas station, most of which who do not carry any sort of nicotine replacement therapy products at all. So this bill is about increasing access. It's about helping people, and it's about putting our city on track to end nicotine addiction, to curb it at the very least, and that really starts with access to medicine, access to care. And so I look forward to the hearing, and I hope to have support from my colleagues on this very important bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Co-sponsor. Please note the Councilwoman Sneed is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three one two Required Retail Tobacco Health Warnings and Smoking Sensation Information. For the purpose of requiring the Health Commissioner to create and distribute to retailers of tobacco products signs that contain certain tobacco health warnings and smoke sensation information, requiring retailers of tobacco products to prominently place the signs distributed by the Health Commissioner in their places of business, providing for a special effective date, and imposing certain civil penalties for violations. Sponsors Bullock, Scott, Burnett, Henry, Pinkett, Cohen, Clark.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill comes from both a personal and a public health perspective. On a personal level, grew up in a household with a father who smoked for decades. Took him years to be able to quit. And so we know the effects of, not only the effects for the person who's smoking, but also secondhand smoking, the effects of that. And so we want to make sure that people have the information, not only of the negative health aspects of it, but then also how to stop smoking. So having that information about cessation, I think is very important, particularly in our communities, to echo what my colleagues said around equity, because many of our communities see a higher concentration of people who are addicted to nicotine. So again, I would appreciate the support of our co-sponsors as well as the rest of our colleagues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This has, please note, Councilwoman Sneed is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three one three Electronic Smoking Devices. For the purpose of broadening the definition of smoking devices to encompass all electronic smoking devices, regulating flavored e-liquids, creating specific sanitation standards for the manufacture and sale of e-liquids, defining certain terms, imposing certain penalties, and providing for special effective dates. Sponsors Pinkett, Scott, Burnett, Bullock, Henry, Cohen, Clark.
Councilwoman Sneed, please note, Councilwoman Sneed is a co-sponsor. Chair of conscience, Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This bill addresses the dramatically increased use of vaping devices by children. Vaping is frequently touted as a healthier alternative to smoking conventional tobacco, yet recent studies show there are actually many adverse effects associated with using electronic smoking devices. This legislation would prohibit the sale of flavored e-liquids, those characterized flavors that have become the most enticing and appealing to youth smokers. It would revise the health code to include the public health industry's preferred definition of electronic smoking devices. And lastly, it would require the maintenance of sanitary conditions among manufacturers of e-liquids. And so looking forward to the hearing on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three one four Repeal of Ordinance eighty-seven dash eleven seventy-one The Wyman Park Medical Center Joint Use Facility with the Johns Hopkins University Plant Unit Development. For the purpose of repealing ordinance eighty-seven dash eleven seventy-one which designated certain property as a residential plant unit development known as the Wyman Park Medical Center Joint Use Facility with the Johns Hopkins University and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Clark, Stokes.
Chair of conscience, Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, this was a planned unit development that was established back in nineteen eighty-seven when some of you, not me, weren't born. And it has been, had a very useful life, and now it's going to take a big nap and be terminated if the neighborhood and the council so agree. The big reason for it is that there is a development being planned for the northeast corner of that site next to the old public health hospital, Wyman Park Hospital. And it's kind of an international program of research and communities coming together with researchers from everywhere to figure out how we all can get along together better, and like the way we get along here in the Baltimore City Council. So I know we'll be called in as, you know, researchers ourselves and witnesses to how this all can happen. I'm very pleased that we'll all have a chance to hear more about Agora and what they would like to come and build here in Baltimore. But it will not affect, it's just in that corner of that square block where the hospital is. It's not affecting the hospital yet, but someday something might, but under the underlying zoning, which is educational campus two, they can no longer build as high or large a building that, as you can with the PUD under EC two. So things are kind of shrinking on the site, but Agora will rise if the community says they support it and if we can get your support. Thank you.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution eighteen dash zero one one nine R. Request for State Action: Police Redistricting. For the purpose of calling on the Baltimore City delegation to the two thousand and nineteen Merlin General Assembly to secure enactment of legislation requiring that the Baltimore City Police Department review and adjust police district boundaries after the information from each decennial census becomes available to ensure that Baltimore's security resources are allocated as efficiently as possible. Sponsors Henry, Scott, Burnett, Bullock, Cohen, Schleifer, Dorsey, Clark, Risinger, Stokes, Sneed.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you know, this is not our first swing at this particular target. This resolution was introduced and adopted under the last council, and then again last year under this council. It has not yet been taken up and dealt with at the state level, and we're hopeful that through the efforts of my co-lead sponsor, Councilman Scott, that will be different this year. But we are also all aware of the fact that the police districts in Baltimore City not only are of varying sizes, both in area and population, but also that these districts have been frozen in time for as long as anyone can remember. And although we have asked several different police administrations to voluntarily redistrict and look at all the police districts in a comprehensive fashion, they have not done so on their own. So we are looking to the General Assembly as we are so often called to do when requiring change in operations in the police department since the General Assembly has not seen fit to give the mayor and city council of Baltimore that power. I'd like to, at this point, if I may, yield some time to Councilman Scott.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I think that my colleague from the fourth district has pretty much said everything. We know that this piece of legislation has actually been introduced the last two years in Annapolis by Senator elect McCray as Delegate McCray, and now that he's now in the Senate, the bill for the last two years has passed the House overwhelmingly unanimously in twenty seventeen and with just four people against in twenty eighteen. And we think now that he's in the Senate, we'll be able to move this bill along with his other House colleagues that have now moved to the Senate where the bill has gone to die. So thank you. Thank you again, Mr. President, and for all the colleagues for your support to this, and hopefully this year we can have the administration's support as well. Thank you.
You want to tell us what y'all talking about, or you want to move the bill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to suspend the rules permit immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor suspending rules, be the adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Most encourage the rules suspended. Chair of conscience, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for immediate adoption of this resolution.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor adopting resolution eighteen dash oh one one nine R., say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry this resolution is adopted. Please note the Council President Young abstains.
City Council Resolution eighteen dash zero one two zero R. Request for State Action: Strengthening Penalties for Straw Purchases and Trafficking Handguns in Maryland. For the purpose of calling on the Merlin General Assembly to enact and the governor to sign legislation that strengthens the penalties for straw purchases and gun trafficking in Maryland from a misdemeanor to a felony with increased fines. Sponsors Scott, Burnett, Henry, Pinkett, Cohen, Stokes, Dorsey, Sneed, Clark, Risinger, Schleifer.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, recently the council had a hearing about the Crime Gun Intelligence Center with the mayor's office of criminal justice and also the ATF. And what we learned at the hearing was something very shocking to some people, not to those on the Public Safety Committee. So from the period between January first of twenty seventeen and July the second of this year, there were seventeen hundred and sixty-six guns recovered by the police department and traced back to their origin. Eight hundred and thirteen of those guns had an origin within the state of Maryland, while nine hundred and fifty-three of them had an origin from outside the state of Maryland. And what we then learned, and something that we've become quite disgusted with, to be honest, is that trafficking a gun into the state of Maryland is only a misdemeanor. Straw purchasing a gun in the state of Maryland is only a misdemeanor. And while our state has some of the most strict gun laws for people that are using it, we have people, as was told to us at the hearing, who are at any given time trying to traffic two hundred, three hundred, four hundred guns onto the streets of Baltimore, and they know that if they get caught, which is very, very small chance that they will, that they will only get a misdemeanor slap on the wrist. If we're truly going to try to cut off the flow of guns into the city of Baltimore, which is helping to drive the violence in the city of Baltimore, we can't just think that we're going to arrest a gentleman on the street with a gun, and that's going to be the only solution. We have to try to figure out how to cut off the supply. So the state has tried this over the past few years, Senator Ferguson, Delegate Clippinch, and we just want to support them in this effort. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to immediately adopt this resolution.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor suspending rules, be the adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry the rules suspended. Chair of conscience, Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor adopting resolution eighteen dash oh one two oh R., say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry this resolution is adopted. Please note, Council President Young abstains.
City Council Resolution eighteen dash zero one two one R. Calling for support of the Be More Invested Campaign for Year-Round Youth Jobs Program. For the purpose of requesting that the mayor's office of employment development, Baltimore City Public School System, Baltimore City Foundation, and business leaders support and work with the community law and actions to be more invested campaign to expand youth works from two five-week summer sessions into a year-long program that is closely aligned with career and technical education. Sponsors Cohen, Stokes, Scott, Burnett, Bullock, Henry, Pinkett, Sneed, Risinger, Clark, Schleifer, Dorsey.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Devonte Friedman was a bright, young, curious man who came to this chamber last year to present on how we could reduce violence in Baltimore. And then last weekend, he was murdered. Devonte had a bright future in front of him. When I spoke to his mom, she told me that he was excited about going to college next year. Devonte deserved life. Diamante deserved life. Sebastian deserved life. All of our children deserve life. We cannot allow Baltimore to become a graveyard for children. As a new father, I'm tired of hearing from the moms of murdered men and women in our city. We need to have the political imagination and the moral courage to dream big, to challenge our own assumptions about what's possible, to challenge every sector of our society, including business, government, nonprofit, the school system, every one of us, to say that every young person who wants a job, who wants to work, should be able to have one. The Be More Invested Plan was authored by young people from community law and action, including Devonte Friedman. It seeks to create year-round jobs for all of our young people, but initially it calls for a pilot investment of two million dollars to provide year-round jobs for three hundred and fifty young people. This resolution calls for collaboration between the mayor's office of economic development, the council, the private sector, the school system, all of us. And having run a summer jobs program for the last two summers with my colleague Councilman Burnett, I know these programs work. The data is clear. When young people have a job, when they are learning and growing and have a source of income, they stay out of harm's way. So, Mr. President, I would like to suspend the appropriate rules for immediate adoption of this resolution.
Councilman Burnett, all those in favor suspending rules, be the adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry the rules suspended. Chair of conscience, Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor adopting resolution eighteen dash oh one two one R., say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry this resolution is adopted. Please note that Council President Young abstains.
Thank you.
You can find the consent count in section A at the back of the agenda. There are motions to approve the consent count. Motion by Councilman Pinkett, second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor approving the consent count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry this count is approved. We now move the bills on second read, Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero one nine seven Sarah Matthews, Member Adult Public Guardianship Review Board District Six.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held hearings on December the fourth and the fifth. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero one nine eight Molly J. Timko, Member Adult Public Guardianship Review Board District Six.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero one nine nine Brandon Clayton, Member Baltimore City Youth Commission District Eight.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero two zero one Javierah Geison, Member Baltimore City Youth Commission District Five.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero two zero two Matthew Johnson, Member Baltimore City Youth Commission District Nine.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
Move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero two zero three Sarah Two Kahende, Member Baltimore City Youth Commission District Fourteen.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero two zero four William F. Ariano Junior, Member Inclusionary Housing Board District Four.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero two zero five Ivy Dench Carter, Member Inclusionary Housing Board District Five.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
Move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero two zero six John J. Jennings, Member Inclusionary Housing Board District Eight.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero two zero seven Leonard S. Middleton Senior, Member Inclusionary Housing Board District Six.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA eighteen dash zero two zero nine Henry M. Smart, Member Inclusionary Housing Board District Eleven.
Chair of conscience, Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed. Third read for final passage.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two seven eight City Streets Opening Dillon Street. For the purpose of condemning and opening Dillon Street extending from the east side of CSX Transportation Incorporated Railroad, easterly two hundred and one point twenty-four feet to the west side of South Macon Street as shown on Platte, three oh seven dash A dash twenty-one in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two seven nine City Streets Closing Dillon Street. For the purpose of condemning and closing Dillon Street extending from the east side of CSX Transportation Incorporated Railroad, easterly two hundred and one point twenty-four feet to the west side of South Macon Street as shown on Platte, three oh seven dash A dash twenty-one A in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two eight nine Plant Unit Development Designation Mount Vernon Mill. For the purpose of repealing the existing development plan for the Mount Vernon Mill Plant Unit Development, approving a new development plan for the Mount Vernon Mill Plant Unit Development and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two nine six Licensing and Regulation: National Human Trafficking Resource Center Hotline Information Sign Posting. For the purpose of requiring certain businesses to post a National Human Trafficking Resource Center Hotline Information Line in designated areas, requiring certain reports, defining certain terms, and establishing certain penalties. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third read and roll for final passage.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero one eight nine Short-Term Residential Rentals: Regulation and Taxation. For the purpose of extending the hotel tax to certain transactions facilitated by hosting platforms, requiring the licensing of short-term residential rental units, defining certain terms, providing for the denial, suspension, or revocation of short-term residential rental licenses under certain circumstances, providing for judicial and appellate review of administrative decisions relating to the licensing of short-term residential rental units, imposing certain penalties, clarifying and conforming related provisions, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the regulation and taxation of short-term residential rentals. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer.
Please note that Cohen's a no, Henry's a no.
Schleifer.
Schleifer's a no.
Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note that Sneed abstaining, Mary Pat abstaining. How many no's is it? One, two, three? How many noes is it? One, two, three? This bill is approved. Clearing of the bill status can be found on page nine of the agenda. Committee of Announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The executive appointments committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, December the twelfth, at ten AM to review the following nominations for Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission: David Bowers, Tisha Guthrie, Damian Hotsing, Charles M. Hill, Alan R. Ingram Jr., Alitha Joins, Vernadine Kimball, Shannon E. Snow, Cynthia P. Truitt, Ernest Valerie, and Tiara N. Watkins. Also, the executive appointments committee will hold a hearing on Saturday, January the fifth, beginning at ten AM to review the following nomination for Baltimore City Police Department: Dr. Joel F. Fitzgerald as Commissioner. This hearing will be strictly for, I mean, not strictly, but this hearing will be for the community. Also, on the executive appointments committee will hold a hearing on Monday, January the seventh, beginning at five o'clock to review the Baltimore Police Department, Joel Fitzgerald for Commissioner, and this actually will be with the council members. Thank you.
Chair, this Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, December thirteenth, at two PM in council chambers. This is LO eighteen dash zero zero four five Legislative Oversight Hearing, Charm TV Public Meeting Broadcasting and Streaming at the request of Councilmember Scott. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero one four nine on January the sixteenth, at one PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning located at fourteen oh one Woodall Street and also fourteen forty-six Stevenson Street.
Committee of Announcements. Regular announcements. Everybody know that the tree lighting in Mount Vernon starts today. I think the tree lighting will probably be around eight, about seven fifty, seven fifty. So if you go in there, make sure that, because there's a lot of roadblocks, make sure that you have the correct route to get there. Or if you can walk, because it's not that far, you can walk. Announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I ask that Councilman Reisinger honor a moment of silence for the now two hundred and ninety victims of homicide in Baltimore City and all of those that we've lost to the opioid epidemic as well.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Reisinger.
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, January fourteenth, at five PM in the council chambers. And I ask for a moment of silence for the two hundred and ninety homicides and those who died from the opioid epidemic.
Thank you. There have been no further business. This concludes the forty-seven, seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.